I'm going to call this meeting of the Beaumont Planning Commission to order. Roll call, please.
Can I call the time for you? 6:00 P.M.?
6:00 P.M.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Riarek?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chairman Voss?
Here.
Chairman St. Martin?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I have none.
Are there any conflicts of interest?
Yes, I'll be recusing myself from item four. The applicant is a client of my employer.
Thank you. Any one person may address the planning commission on any matter and not on this agenda. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public comment form provided at the back table and give it to the city clerk. There is a three-minute time limit on public comments. There will be no sharing or passing of time to another person. State law prohibits the commission from discussing or taking actions brought up by your comments. Item number one, approval of the minutes of the June 13 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I second.
Sorry, I missed the motion. Was it Smith?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, motion by Smith and a second by Riarek. Commissioner Johnson?
Approve.
Commissioner Riarek?
Approve.
Commissioner Smith?
Approve.
Vice Chairman Voss?
Approve.
Chairman St. Martin?
Approve. Item number two, temporary use permit, Plan 2017-0018.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the commission, this item was continued from the last meeting to give the chance for an applicant to attend. I did leave a few messages and sent an email for the applicant.
And still nothing.
I don't know if we have got someone here.
Okay.
So, again, staff recommends that you deny temporary use permit, Plan 2017-18. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or staff?
So just as a refresher, this is, it's come in for check a couple of times. The items appear to not have been corrected by the applicant's engineer or architect. And the project has made no progress essentially over the last few months.
That's correct. I believe the architect is no longer in business and he has to now find an additional architect.
Okay.
So the applicant has made efforts to comply?
Nothing has been received by the city. The multiple submittals that were received in the past, there was, the architect did not make any of the corrections requested.
Not recent.
How long?
Let me pull it. I have that information. The initial application for plan check was in April 2016. And then September, and then January, and then a fourth plan check in March. And we haven't had anything since March.
Any other questions?
The plans are not approved yet, right?
No.
Okay, so they're just going through their plan check. They've had corrections four times?
The same corrections.
The same corrections.
The same corrections.
Okay.
Commissioner Riarek?
No, sir.
I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:05. If you'd like to come up and give testimony. State your name and address, please.
My name is Cedar Landman and my address is 1341 East 8th Street, property in question. I thank you guys for hearing me today. And we started this project for my family a couple of years ago. Came in and bought the property. We moved from Washington to California. And before we bought the property, came and talked to Rebecca about what do we need in order to build a house on this property? And she gave me a packet from the city that explained the process. And so I asked her, can we put a trailer on there while we're building the property? And she said, yes, you can. You need to put a concrete pad on the property. And so I talked to Mr. Hightower and he said, you need to elevate the property so that it slopes towards the street, which we did. We put the concrete pad down and then came back and said, okay, can we move our trailer on the property? And they said, no, now you need to have a building permit to do that or you can apply for a temporary use permit, which we did. And the council approved that permit pending as long as we had the permit, building permit issued. And so we went through that process. And they said we needed to have water, which we put water on the property. They said we needed to have sewer, which we put the sewer and applied for the permits and put sewer on the property. We needed to have electricity, which we applied for the permits and put electricity on the property. They said, okay, now you need to pay school fees. And so we paid the school fees, brought in the paperwork to the city for that. He said, okay, you need to pay public works fees. So we paid the public works fees. Mr. Hightower said, okay, now you need a SOALS report. So we did a SOALS report, paid for that. He said, okay, now you need a Title 24 for energy compliance for the property. So we did that. He said, your plans are not up to code, so you need an architect to get that. We had initially purchased plans for the property. So then I hired an architect to do that for us as well. And spent through several checks. There's a question about a basement, which the only reason that the property has a basement is to bring the elevation up on the property so it slopes towards the street. And do you understand where I'm going there? We needed the dirt from the basement in order to make the property slope towards the street, according to Mr. Hightower. So we submit the plans and he said, well, it looks like the windows are not right in the basement. And I'm from Alaska, so I apologize. I'm learning as I go the process here in California. So I asked Ms. Demme and I said, can we, you know, we're coming towards the end. They said, your permits are now going to expire and you have to start all over again with this process. And so I asked, well, can we please live on the property? We need to rebuild our savings. We spent about $15,000 trying to comply with each step of the process. Each time we comply with one, it seems like another one comes up. So we've been working on that for two years and just need some time to build up some savings to keep going with this process. Any questions for me?
Any questions?
I'm sure there's a few.
Jennifer?
Jessica.
Jessica.
So the things, I do commend you on what you've done so far without an architect, because you're mentioning the Title 24 and things like that. Those are complicated, but they are required by California Building Code. So you're not doing anything different than what anyone else would have to do if they were building an infill house in any other state in California. My question is though, are you, if you're not able to continue, is it possible for you to pull the trailer off and go stay somewhere else?
We have complied with the city. Told us, they came and they said, you have to move now. We had the trailer on there for a couple of months. And I said, you know, do we have some time to do that? And they said, no, you have to move it today or move out of the trailer. And I said, is there a fine? I got to find a truck to move the trailer and everything. And they said, yes, it's a thousand dollars a day. Would you like to pay that? And I said, no, I guess I'm going to have to find a place for my family to move.
So the trailer's gone?
The trailer is off the property.
Okay. That's my little question.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
How long are, how much time would you need to be on the property to build your savings back?
The only reason I'm asking to move on, so I'm not paying two things at one time, if that makes sense. I mean, you guys have probably bought a house where you have to build up some reserve in order to pay architect, builder and everything like that. And so I'm asking for a year. I asked for a year in the, in the, this application.
Right. Okay. That's all I have.
And I did have a question for, I asked the city, maybe I'm reading the codes wrong, it's very possible. And I asked them, could you show me where is against the city ordinance? You know, with the concrete pad, with all, there's no safety concerns, no, you know, public health or anything like that. Again, can I see, you know, where those are being violated so that I can correct that? And I was directed, just look at the website, which I've gone through and I can't find it.
I'm not exactly sure which part of the municipal code addresses that, but you could probably, I hope that you do understand that. It's not, the city doesn't want to establish a precedence where people can put fifth wheels while they build or trailers or portable trailers while they build homes. That would obviously cause a problem. I can understand for temporary use, but it's kind of been a while, so.
I know, it's a little, a little crazy. Maybe this boy from Alaska, I apologize for not going about it the California way.
Just quick, you didn't have the RV on there the whole time, right? You just moved that on there in January.
That's correct.
Okay. And then so the whole intent in January was because the time to get the permits was taking a long time. You were running out of cash, so the thought process was put the RV there, save some money so you can get going back.
I thought the, it was pending like any day from what I was receiving from both my architect and from the city that the plans I'm had sent to. I guess you have an external agency that checks the plans.
Yeah.
It's got Fazekas.
Have you received a new architect to fix that problem? Because that's the, I think that's the concern that the city has is, is the amount of time that this could take. Because it, it doesn't look like it's progressing in a positive fashion. Does that make sense? I mean, because we got to look at from neighbor's perspective, other homeowners that live in there. And you would expect us to do the same thing for you if you lived next door.
Absolutely.
So I mean, that's one concern I have is, you know, how long, are we moving in a positive direction? Can you help me ease that concern?
I think just the, just the items that I listed that we've, we've addressed and it, I haven't received them all at once. It say, okay, you need to pay school fees. Okay, I go pay $2,700 for school fees, bringing that paper. Okay, now you need public work fees, so I pay those. And so, and because of my work, I'm only able to come in here once a week to find out the progress of where things are going. And a lot of times, public works may be closed on a certain day, and so I have to come back the next week. That's what it's taking. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, you didn't help ease my concern.
Okay.
The goal is we want to see people get to a successful conclusion. And the idea is, yes, you have a house built, you're living there with your family and we're all great Americans.
Right.
But we want to make sure that if this is approved and the fellow commissioners approve this. I mean, everybody's, we're on this, we're on it together. We want everybody to be successful. But I think that where I need help is knowing that, hey, you get six months, you get 12 months. That, yeah, that's going to help you get you the money that you need and you got things covered and you're moving in the right direction.
Right.
I don't feel that yet.
Okay. And, and that's why I asked for a time period. I didn't ask for two years or five years, you know, to homestead on the property.
Yes, sir.
Just asked for 12 months.
Okay.
And, and the commission approved 12 months on the property with the building permit being issued two years ago, almost two years ago.
Right. And I think so, our concern is like, you're going to have to, I think, start back over right now with the plan submission process. If I remember right, from the last meeting.
If it goes six months without a resubmit, the plan check will expire and we'll be using the current building code at that point.
So you're kind of.
So we're still, you're still grandfathered in with the 2013 code?
Until he had six months from the.
It behooves you to get something submitted immediately on that and avoid going to the newer code because it's going to be considerably more restrictive.
We returned it March 30th, so six months from March 30th.
Right.
I believe my understanding is from the building official, that's when they'll have to make sure it meets current.
And that's different from, I'm sorry. That's different from what Mr. Hightower was saying, that it's already expired and we have to now go with the new building code.
So you have until August 30th?
I believe so. Again, I'm not the building official.
That means to resubmit his plans with the correct corrections.
Well, we need verification from the building official.
Yeah, I, my understanding from Mr. Hightower from the last time I talked to them, I, and I had, you know, prepared a memo that we, I don't know what Mr. Hightower told them specifically, but we did give him an extension through the plan check because normally we said all permits need to be pulled by July 1st for the 2016. So I think as long as the plan check is valid, Mr. Hightower, according to my notes, had given him an extension. So as long as he stays within that six-month plan check, we would be willing to give him the extension to stay under the 2013 code. I don't know that there's, I, and I couldn't tell you how much would change on a single-family house that he was doing between
That's true.
the 13 and 16 code. It might not even be too much.
Energy efficiency and.
Yeah. So it's my understanding is within his power to give that extension. And I have a note that says we, we would as long as it stays within the six months from the last plan check.
I understand what Mr. Hightower is saying and then maybe, maybe you're misunderstanding. California Building Code allows for plan check applications to be for 180 days.
Okay.
So typically that's, the state feels that 180 days is sufficient time for you to get all your plan check corrections worked out, ironed out and a permit issued. That could be what he means, is that technically it's already expired.
I believe that is. He was saying it was expired.
That was my understanding, that it's already expired. We have to start.
No, I think he was letting you know that there is, in a sense, an urgency, not that he expired it, but that technically it would have expired had we wanted to be completely strict with the code.
Just give me the way to go. If it's, if it's expired, it's expired and I'll move on from there, but.
Either way, you need to hire an architect to, to meet the requirements.
And you would need to do that very quickly.
Right.
You know, I know that there's probably some smaller architects, engineers in the area that could probably help you out with that that are more familiar with this and hopefully a little bit more responsive to comment a correction than what you've been dealing with previously. But, you know, you don't, you don't want to get set back under the building code and start from scratch. And if the city has been willing to grant you that, you know, that's, that's a big, but we have to confirm that obviously with, I can't speak on behalf of the building official.
You know, I, I'm sure he's willing to, like I said, from my notes, but starting from scratch, I mean, there's a lot of comments. So I think it is almost.
It's almost starting from scratch.
It's almost starting from scratch anyway. So you might not have an architect that they might as well do the new ones, just in my opinion. But, but I, you know, I have a copy of the corrections, of the last corrections. If you want me to pass it around to you guys so you can see how, you know, second check, third check, fourth check. And, you know, when there was new, if we got one little piece of information, there was a bunch of needed information on that.
Right.
So, you know, it's, I know he talked about the basement. I believe the first check didn't have a basement and now I think, so that was one comment that was addressed at one point was to, it looks like to show a basement because it's in the description now.
Okay.
But, but there's, there's a lot of standard corrections, you know, square footage information. How is the basement going to be finished? Windows, that's who he was talking about, when to specify compliant window sizes. A lot of it's just specify.
It's just, it's just incomplete engineering.
Yes.
So I think Commissioner Riarek kind of hit the tone on the head here is that what we need to see is, you know, evidence of further progress on this, you know, to kind of have a level of comfort. I remember when you were in here two years ago, initially when we, when we granted the, you know, once we get through everything, if you have this on here, that we can go ahead and we can grant you the temporary occupancy while you're in, under construction.
Sure.
And that was, at that point, that was kind of a good faith measure that we had that, you know, we kind of keep moving things forward. It appears that it has stalled and the fact that there's a hole in the ground is, brings it to greater attention.
Right.
You know, to the public and to the rest of the community at large. And, you know, that's what I think we're looking for the assurance on is that, you know, we're not, it's not going to be, okay, a year from now I can come back in and start the process. You know, it's that a year from now, I've got, you know, I got my foundation poured and I'm going vertical.
Right.
And I'd like some assurance, assurances on that to be able to consider this, you know, which would be, you know, resubmitting plans by, you know, as we start getting in by the end of August. And that's kind of where I'm at for that level of comfort. And I'm surprised you have a building loan that want to cover for your engineering?
No, they required that the permit be, I've had hard money lenders saying, yeah, go ahead and do it. I'd just chosen not to go that route for obvious reasons.
A good call. I mean, just, you have no bigger fans than here. I mean, you're invested into the property. We get that. You got money in there and it's, we want to see the city develop. We don't want to see land there. And the last thing I think we want to see is you end up moving out, end up selling the property. I think it was for sale, but sit, closing down, you got a hole in the ground and a pat. It does us no good either. I think you have some fans here, but we really need some, some numbers from you that says, hey, in the next six months, you got to help us be specific. I'm going to have this done, that done, that done. I think that would help me out for sure. I mean, we want it, we want you to be successful, bottom line, but help us help you.
I understand.
We can't, we can't go into dark. Does that make sense?
No, it makes perfect sense.
And I want to be clear that we still need, public work still needs precise grade. So there's not even a pad. They've only gotten, he's only gotten rough grade done. There still needs to be some middle of plans and approval of precise grade for, for the pad.
I've got a few questions.
Yes, go ahead.
So Mr. Landman, do you completely understand what's required or are you still kind of in the dark?
No, that, she brings up a good point. The, you have a city engineer on staff, Mr. Omar, is that his name?
Aftab, I believe you talked.
Aftab. He signed off on our grading plan. And then Mr. Hightower said, okay, now you need an additional grading plan. I said, you realize it's another $4,000 just for a piece of paper? And he said, yeah, I realize it, you need it. And I said, so your, your engineer signing off on the grading plan is different, right? And it just, I'm a little frustrated because it seems like it changes every time. I understand.
She mentioned, you know, there are a lot of items in there.
Right.
Does that sink in? Do you understand everything that needs to be done? So if we were to say, okay, fine, you can have the temporary permit. Does it make sense to you? Do you have a path forward? I'm going to do A, B, C or are you still a little bit in the dark?
Well, basically my plan is if, if the commission approves my request, over the next four months, I would save up money to hire an engineer that could address those issues because I don't understand the requirements from the city.
No, and I respect that because I don't think I would either.
Okay.
So in terms of your, your construction loan?
Yes.
If you were to get your permit four months from now?
Yes, correct.
You have the access to construct the property?
In four months? No, because I've used my reserve. They require a certain number of reserve and I've used that to try to address the issues that the city has asked me to do and I've paid for those cash out of my pocket.
So do you have a loan in place for the construction?
No, I don't have a loan in place right now.
I guess back to Street, have there been any complaints from the neighbors about the property?
Not that I'm aware of. I would have to check with code enforcement, but I do not, I have not been told of any.
I did ask with code enforcement, the same question. And I said, has there been any complaints? And they said, just from one person, that's Mr. Hightower.
So it's just the notification that he had moved on before the approved planning commission. When I contact, it was actually I who contacted code enforcement to let them know that we had a violation going on.
The property to the left, or I guess it would be east, is vacant, I believe.
There's actually a homeless man living in that property.
Okay. And then the property to the right has a house on it.
That's correct.
I mean, I don't think it's the end of the world if there's a trailer there for some short amount of time, but it's still not helping us though. I mean, what, what do you need? You applied for 12 months, but is that it? Hey, if I get 11 months, I ain't going to be able to make this work. If I get 12 months, I can make this work. Or if I get six months, I can make this work. Can you be specific?
Right. No, I understand where you're coming from. I guess it could be a timeline, like you, like you were saying, if you did decide to approve it, 10 to 12 months or just put a date on it. Okay, if you don't have, just like we're going, I think it takes a process. So say if you don't have a building permit issued by the city in 10 months, you're done.
I mean, I think you've done your, I mean, I think you've proven to me that you would move off the property. It's not going to turn into a disaster zone.
Yeah.
You know, for the, for consideration for the other commissioners, I would be willing to support something like 10 months. I, you know, I drive by the area, I see it. It's not the end of the world if there's an RV there. The gentleman is invested into the property, obviously with thousands of dollars. I think if we were in the same situation, I think we'd want the same.
What kind of liability does the city?
We just realized he doesn't have a microphone working. It's not plugged into anything, so we were trying to find the cord to plug it in. Sorry.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
What kind of liability does the city have if we were to grant him a shorter period than a year?
I don't know that there's much of a liability. Obviously, the issue that we run into with temporary use permits when someone comes back and requests something like this means that they're going to be back and asking for the year once the permit's issued. So you end up with a year, just like we had with the tent, a year and then a year and then a year. And we see them coming back until it is complete or until they, you know, are able to do that. So obviously staff's concern is ending up having a trailer there for longer than one year. We recommended the one year during construction. That has been direction from planning commission in the past. However, we did not, we would not recommend, you know, someone living on it before they're starting construction. It's one thing to have a security in a sense of you're the owner, builder, you want security on site, you live on there. You've got expensive things coming onto the house. There's a little bit of a justification. When in a tract home, they have modular offices, they have security. So there's a little more of a, you know, understanding for an infill to do a trailer, but just to live on an, on an RV on a property is not something that staff would support. And I can answer maybe his question on where it says that in the code, is I think he was pointing to the code for an RV or a trailer park, that's a conditional use permit, to have a trailer park. So it's not, yes, his zone allows for him to apply for a conditional use permit for a trailer park, but it's not something that would normally fit that, you know, a single lot. So it's not, there's no permitted use to live on your RV in residential zones. It's just not, it's not a permitted use. And we don't have to put a list of everything not permitted. We are only required to put a list of items that are permitted. So the fact that it doesn't say he can live on his house in an RV means that it's a non-permitted use.
Are you planning to build this yourself?
No.
So do you have a contractor identified?
Yes.
And the contractor is not helping you to get all of the items ready to go?
Of course, with money, sir. He wants, he wants money to start.
And you can't get a construction loan prior to getting the permit?
Not without a reserve, which I've used up trying to get the permit.
What happens to you if we say no?
I keep, keep living life, sir. It's not going to be the end of the world for me if you say no, so don't, don't feel like you have to. I already thought you said no when Rebecca called me and said to come in today because this was, I guess, before the. the agenda last week or last month. So it was a surprise to me when she asked me to come down and, uh, just you being willing to listen, I appreciate that.
Do you continue this process if we say no?
If you say no, um, I will try to sell the property.
So I, I, my feeling on this, and do we have any, actually, I don't have any other questions.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing at, uh, 6:28.
So, you know, my thing is with this is again, as, you know, Commissioner Rayrick kind of alluded to is continued progress with it. You know, a, a year to construct a single family home is probably a really long timeframe for it. Um, and, you know, by the time, you know, we're looking at getting a permit to, through construction, you want some time, you know, it should not take that long to get the house constructed. It shouldn't. I, I would be more comfortable issuing the, uh, the TUP once we had some kind of approved plan and then have some, you know, four months to start construction or whatever it may be at that point. Uh, but leaving it kind of open-ended at this time is, it has me just a little apprehensive.
I think you could.
Can I, I just want to make clear that with our application process, um, if you deny it, it's stuck for a year to reapply. So if you guys are apprehensive and want to see movement, continuing it for two or three months is a better outcome because then you wouldn't be able to reapply for one year because there wouldn't be enough change circumstances with the property itself to reapply. So I just want to make sure you guys are aware of that.
Good.
And I think the thought process would be for the commission's consideration is give them a temporary use permit to park their RV on there without a building permit for 10 months. After 10 months, you don't have a building permit. It's going to come back to the same people here and then you guys kill it. Then it's dead. The, the environment where that's at right now, again, if you've been down there, it's, it's, it's not the end of the world. Like I said, the other side is a vacant lot and the, the house next door could use some work. Um, the gentleman is obviously is polite, considerate, you know, he's not, and, and I think that means a lot. You know, he, he wants to work. He's tried. Yeah, granted, maybe we all don't understand the processes. So better processes and understanding start and finish, you know, so you know, just like the commissioner was asking about. But I don't think it, it's going to hurt us or the city if you do consider something like that. So I would like to make a motion if the commissioner would entertain, entertain me.
Entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve temporary use permit plan 2017, 2017, 20018, temporary occupancy of a travel trailer located at 1341 East 8th Street with the modification of not to exceed 10 months.
Can I, um, request an amendment to that motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to make sure we continue with the same conditions we approved previously, which would be. Which would be that the, um, that I believe, where is that condition? The condition that they have to remove all of it once, um, I apologize, I'm sorry. Trying to find my original letter.
All utilities installed to the trailer shall be abandoned and removed prior to final occupancy of the house.
Thank you.
Yes, please add that to my.
So there, there are three conditions in the, in the original approval from September 30th, 2015.
So we would have two conditions on this approval is my understanding of your motion. One, that is valid for a 10-month period and two, that all utilities installed to the trailer shall be abandoned or removed prior to final occupancy of the house.
Yes, ma'am. Perfect.
Or at the end of the 10-month period.
Yes.
Let's put a specific date on that.
I would, in my letter, I would write the, it'd be whatever 10 months is from today. I could do that. That's fine. 10 months.
Mr. Chairman?
One point of clarification. So that would be the 10 months starting, say, today to get the building permit or to complete construction of the entire unit?
To get the building.
To get the building permit.
Okay.
Okay. I guess I'm confused. I thought you were giving him a 10-month to live on his trailer. No matter what he does, he has 10 months and then, then he has to reapply if he wants to keep having the trailer there and you would reconsider.
Yes.
That was my understanding of his motion. Whether there's a permit pulled or not, you're issuing a 10-month temporary use permit for him to live on there.
Yes.
Without the condition that he has to have a building permit.
Yes, and the intent is so he can build up savings for the commission's consideration.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Okay, so motion dies for lack of a second?
We don't have a second, so.
Is there any other motions?
I'll make a motion to deny it.
Second?
Except I.
You've got to go one way or another.
Well, you know, I, I would do the same, you know, like I said, I'd like to see some forward progress with it, you know, to be able to have a level of comfort. And at that point, I would recommend, uh, continuing the matter until, for a, um, three-month period. And if, and bring back to commission so long as plans have been, uh, resubmitted.
I don't have that ability. The motion would either be to continue it for three months and he can withdraw it knowing that you're positioned.
Okay.
Um, but either way, I would have to, I can't, I can't automatically deny it if it doesn't come in.
No, okay. So I will just, I will just motion to continue for three months.
Okay.
But, so we know that he doesn't live on the property right now. So the point of saving the money becomes null.
I'm going to second the original motion.
We can't.
Okay, then. I'll make a motion.
I don't.
Can I?
Let's finish with Ms. Smith's motion so we can finish that one out. So your motion was to continue for three months? Commissioner Smith?
No, it was three months, yes.
Okay. Is there a second on that? To continue it for three months?
You've put us into a, uh, into a bind here.
Okay, so motion dies for lack of a second.
So can I make another motion? I'll be modified a little bit.
Can we take a two-minute break, please?
Yes.
I told him I didn't need it. I apologize.
I've received direction. You can make the same motion again.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we approve temporary use permit plan 2017-0018, temporary occupancy of a travel trailer located at 1341 East 8th Street with the amendment that the permit does not exceed 10 months from issuance, which would be today when this is approved. And then also, all like electrical cables will be removed at 10 months or if a building permit's issued, when the trailer is removed, the electrical will be removed. Did I get all that right?
It was the, the condition was all utilities installed to the trailer shall be abandoned and removed prior to final occupancy of the house.
Yes. Is that okay?
Or at 10 months.
Or at 10 months, yes.
Whichever hurts first.
10 months, it's either over with or you got your permit. It's one or the other.
I'll second that one.
Sorry, writing it all down. Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Deny.
Commissioner Reerick?
Approve.
Commissioner Smith?
Deny.
Vice Chairman Voss?
Approve.
Chairman St. Martin?
Approve.
Okay, that's 3-2.
Okay, item number three?
Yes. This is, um, this is something new to you guys. Um, in the past, these minor revisions were done at a staff level. I was trained and taught that if they were reducing the number of lots, that it was considered substantial conformance and done at a staff level. However, um, in the research about six to eight months ago, we were looking over the code and we learned that a minor revision had to go to the, to this board, not as a public hearing. So it's not a full, like, track map amendment that would go to council, but it just goes to planning commission. There's no public hearing. We did not advertise it for your approval of any minor amendment to a tentative track map. So this is the Four Seasons specific plan, um, originally the Hoffchild specific plan. It's, the specific plan itself has been through multiple amendments as well as the map. This is revision number nine, um, because it is a 2,313 unit, um, development. Um, it is zoned SPA specific plan area. The map includes, um, the following revisions. The unit count within the last phase of development has been reduced from 178 lots to 168 lots. This was accomplished by widening various lots. Additional open space was added within the vicinity of the cul-de-sac. Elevations were adjusted to reflect a balanced site based on topography and street patterns remain mostly unchanged with the exception of standard knuckles being replaced with elbow configure, configurations. All the residential design, traffic circulation, um, grading, slopes and landscaping are all within our code and, and are not being proposed to be changed with this. Um, staff is recommending you approve TM 2017-001 for minor revision of track map 33096. We do have the conditions of approval. The planning conditions of approval are all the original conditions of approval with the added conditions at the very end, um, which is just to bring it up to, um, current standard, um, to make sure that there's no, you know, get some digital copies of files that we're working towards, starting to do GIS addresses and things like that. Um, community mailboxes have been a problem in other communities, not necessarily this one because it's gated, but that they, um, were making sure that they understand that the HOA is responsible for the mailboxes in this scenario. Um, and then if any of the conditions anywhere conflicted is up to the city, which condition prevails. Um, Public Works provided a new set of conditions and, um, so did fire. If you have any questions, I can answer them. And also the applicant's here to answer your questions you may have for them.
Okay.
Commissioners, any questions of staff?
No, sir, not here.
No. So what is your threshold for substantial conformance?
We don't have one in our code. It says a minor revision has to come back to you. So we are looking at updating the code for the future for maps. So substantial conformance at this point is left to specific plans within the administrative section of that specific plan to plot plans.
Right.
But maps, it says a minor revision has to come back to you right now. We are working on updating that to put a, a point where it doesn't make sense. They're obviously doing less impacts with less slots and, um, in, in the past, you know, no one's going to complain about that. So.
Right.
Um, so we're, we're working on updating that code.
Okay.
In the future.
Do you have any questions of the applicant?
No.
I'll, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Smith, second by Voss. Did I get that right?
Correct.
Commissioner Johnson?
Approve.
Commissioner Reerick?
Approve.
Commissioner Smith?
Approve.
Vice Chairman Voss?
Approve.
Chairman St. Martin?
Approve.
Item number four, plot plan number PP2, 2017 dash 0018, Sundance specific plan.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, this is the same Skycrest elevations that were previously approved. The previous old approvals did not have the option for them to put them in the different planning areas. So they've, they've moved this to the south of Cougarway area and are asking for approval of the same homes, um, that have already been through you guys in any of those areas, um, in, in that south of Cougarway, um, planning areas 35, 36, 38, or 39. If you have any questions, I can answer them specifically. But you guys have seen the elevations and they're using the same approved landscape plans that still meet code.
I think they, the intent, right, is just to mix it up a little bit. That's what we've seen before. Mix the models up.
Sometimes it's to mix it up. Sometimes with, um, sometimes they, their one type is selling so much better than the other, they want to keep selling it in another area. There, there's a lot of reasons, but you know, uh.
We've done this before.
A good mix is a good mix.
Yep.
Any questions of staff other than that?
No, sir.
No.
Any questions of the applicant?
No. No.
I'll entertain a motion.
Can you open and close a public hearing first?
I'll open the public, okay. I'll open the public hearing at 6:47.
Okay. I have no requests to speak.
Okay, I'll close it at 6:47.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve plot plan, PP 2017-0018, Skycrest Sundance specific plan, planning area 39, located southeast of Cougarway in Cherry Valley.
I'll second.
With the recommended con, um, authorization to approve the standards and elevations of planning areas 35, 36, 38, or 39 with the approval of a minor plot plan by the community development director for verification of setbacks?
Exactly what we said. Exactly.
All of the above.
Can you second that?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Approve.
Commissioner Reerick?
Approve.
Commissioner Smith is recused. Vice Chairman Voss?
Approve.
Chairman St. Martin?
Approve.
Item number five, general plan update.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce you to Matt Purvis. He is our consultant, if you've not met him yet, um, from Ramian Associates. He is our consulting firm for our general plan update. Um, we wanted to come to you and give you an update of where we are at so far and receive some direction. Make sure what we're doing is what you guys kind of thought we were going to do since you guys are kind of the first recommending body on this. Um, so I'll turn it over to Matt.
Don't break it.
You can use this one.
I hear that one doesn't work so well. Good evening. Thank you very much for having me. Uh, nice to meet the four of you. Nate, we met, uh, a month or two ago. So, uh, thank you for having me. having me. We've been hard at work and have some fun stuff to share this evening. And, and so Rebecca tells me that we have until 8:00 PM, is that right? Not so much, all right. Kyle told me to talk fast and he bet me Starbucks. I can get done in five minutes. I'm probably going to fail both. All right. Our hope tonight was to just go over where we've been, what we've accomplished over the last few months. Primarily what we've been working on is doing some background research on the city and the city's demographics and other market trends that may affect the city and its future, as well as conducting a number of community outreach activities. The community outreach activities are in many ways more germane to what's happening in the process right now, so we'll put a little bit more of an emphasis on that. I, I think that means I get two minutes on that and one minute on existing conditions. And, and really what we've been driving up to is trying to articulate a vision for the city, and that's, that's the crux of what we're hoping to get in front of you this evening, get a little input from you on, all right, are we going in the right direction? So, try this again. As a planning commission, I'm sure you guys are intimately familiar with the general plan, what it's supposed to do. I got some laughter, all right. The general plan is the blueprint for our city, right? It's, it's supposed to be the, articulate our, our future 20 years out in the, 25 years out or so, articulate the, the vision for the future and the path to get there. We, we often liken it to a blueprint for the city. We also often in, in our field describe it, well, the attorneys, as the constitution for development because it's supposed to be the guiding document. And when anything comes before us and we're not exactly sure what to do with it, we're supposed to compare that thing against the general plan, a track map, a specific plan, and, you know, proposed infrastructure, whatever it is, and, and the general plan is supposed to be that guiding document. Similarly, it's supposed to guide decisions about our capital improvement plans, it's supposed to guide the zoning code, subdivision ordinance, et cetera, et cetera. So, so much of what we do in building a city, both on the public and private side, is guided by this very, very important document. For how we, we craft general plans, this idea of having a really clear vision of who we want to be is, is similarly very, very important. We don't really know what kind of a plan to write for you if we don't know what type of place you're hoping to create or maintain. So that, that, that's why where we're at tonight is, is very critical to check in with you and find out, all right, yep, that's, that resonates, I think you're on the right track, or timeout, something's amiss. And, and again, we find this is really important to check in with you early on this stage because we're about to spend six or nine months doing some really heavy planning work, additional community outreach, and it would be a real bummer for everyone involved if we got nine months down the road and we found out that we had missed something very critical in the direction that we were going with the plan. Believe me, I know, I've experienced that from that side, and it makes you want to cry. So we're going to go over a little bit this evening what we've heard so far. We've had a number of different outreach activities as we've tried to go out into the community, ask the community to come to us, seeking input on these ideas about the future, the community's values, ideas, aspirations, fears, et cetera. We've had two advisory group meetings at the general plan task force. We've also met with the city council subcommittee twice. One, one of those meetings was a joint meeting with the city, with the task force. We conducted an online survey, and that was online for close to 60 days, I think. We went to the Cherry Festival, and many of us on the team, both public and our, our consulting team, Rebecca, some of the other staff, some of the task force members, all went to the Cherry Festival, and we were there all weekend talking with people. We've had one public workshop, and we have a series of ongoing stakeholder and focus group meetings where we're going to people who, for whatever reason, might have a, a really significant perspective on something that we really need to hear. So big property owners, developers, community advocates, chamber of commerce, business representatives, agency representatives, et cetera. And, and the idea behind having this extensive outreach is that we're trying to get as many perspectives about what's happening here in the city, seeking where trends, ideas, concerns, issues are converging to help us understand things that we really need to be paying attention to. Please forgive some of our font. We, we've learned that Rebecca and I are not on the same page with font, and occasionally we have technical difficulties. We, we did not miss these things like capitalization. First task force meeting, we, we found to be very helpful, and I, I'm not going to go through every bullet point here because I want to win my Starbucks bet, but you can see here, a lot, a lot of the big ideas and kind of the concerns and language about where we should go, be going, and some of the vision and principles discussion are listed, but, you know, this, this kind of helped us to start setting the tone, at least for one parameter, one set of input for what is happening in the city. You can see, we heard a lot of things about having a balanced city, small town character, you know, responsible growth, and, and there were some other ideas about kind of aspiring and changing and high-tech, like high-tech infrastructure. We went to the Cherry Festival as well, and we heard very similar, very similar themes from the community members that we talked to there. We had a small exercise there with the community, and we had about 90 people who were willing to, to participate in, in response, and here's kind of a summary of it. But again, we started hearing very similar things about the, kind of the nature and character of the town that they wanted to see and experience, and what that might mean for the future. The community survey that we conducted, we started again seeing some very similar trends, but we had a very high number of respondents, 564, and we find that to be a very high number of responses for a non-statistically valid survey, so this is open to anyone. You know, you might not get a, a perfect representation of the community, but it's, it's very, very good turnout. For example, we did a similar survey in another town of close to 200,000 people, and we had around 400 people, so we felt like this was very good for a town of 40,000 people. We, most of the people that responded had lived in the city for 60 years or so, and most of the people that responded were kind of that middle income bracket, 25 to, you know, almost retirement age, let's say, or getting right into the retirement age. We, we continue to hear similar ideas here that people really, really like living in Beaumont. The things they like about Beaumont are its, kind of its feel, how safe it is, how, how people respond to one another, and it feels very neighborly. And we started seeing some, hearing similar concerns from the survey as we did with people we talked to at the festival and the task force, the city council, about growth outpacing the construction of infrastructure, type of growth, and some, some needs for additional entertainment opportunities and jobs here in town. So people continue to tell us they do not like having to leave Beaumont for so much, whether that's jobs, entertainment, shopping, et cetera. People really like living here, but they, they would like to be able to be here more. Community workshop number one, unfortunately, we held that on the hottest day of the year. And we had 20, we, we only had 21 people attend, which was, was disappointing for us, but again, it was, I think, 108 degrees outside, so that was just bad timing, I suppose. The 21 people participated, and the, the valuable part about having a smaller group of people participate was that we were able to have some fairly in-depth conversations. We broke the workshop into two sessions where one was kind of small group discussions, and participants were given a series of questions, and they were able to talk with their neighbors about these ideas, their visions for the future, their concerns, et cetera. And then we let everybody loose on a series of workshop stations, and they could go at their own pace and give some input on, on what they, on their thoughts. We, because I, I, I know you guys don't want me to go through the multiple-page summary, we can give you copies. It's, if it's not online already, it will be very, very soon, so you can look at all the glory details, but teasing out the big ideas, we heard that the two highest supported priorities for the city were fixing or creating or addressing the lack of downtown, and this idea that we need a lot more job opportunities within town. People like the location, they like so many things about Beaumont, but again, they don't want to leave. And interestingly, about the lack of downtown, kind of as a footnote, we heard a lot of people questioning where exactly the downtown is, and there are a lot of different perspectives on where Beaumont's downtown is. So that was very, very interesting as well. Going down into a little bit more detail, the, the, with regard to the downtown, the highest supported idea was create a walkable, safe place. So this idea of a downtown being a walkable place, you know, traffic functions differently, people function differently, that shopping and entertainment is in a different form, that came through pretty clear. With regard to priorities and what should be preserved here in the city, the ideas of police-fire safety were really important, if, if not maintaining and preserving the existing levels. Take it further, people love the mountain views, and, and this idea, again, of small town feel came through again. We conducted a visual preference survey, looked for the types of development people responded to, and it, which, which was exciting for us, the, the feedback that we received seemed to really align with these ideas of small town character. So people really seemed to pick the things that look like a smaller town, you know, the residential development types, the commercial development types, things that looked like they came from a small town got higher votes. And then we also conducted a youth activity, and unfortunately, we only had one youth there that was, would participate, and she did so with one of the task force members. We conducted a mapping art activity as well to see where people might want to see change or preservation. The high-level summary is kind of the, the, the commercial and industrial things that people were interested or willing to tolerate, if you will, just kind of hitting the gamut. We're generally more around the center of the city, along the freeway interstate corridors, and a lot of the amenities people were seeking, like open space parks and residential, tended to be further out. Now, again, this is a gross simplification because we're, I'm not allowed to be here till 8 o'clock with you tonight. So, summing that all up, what we, what we think we've been hearing from people is that they really like the small town feel, they really like everybody's friendliness, they really like how safe it feels. We keep hearing that over and over again. We keep hearing how much people like the beautiful location, and it's such a, you know, beautiful setting. People love their neighborhoods, and, and people love the value. They get a lot for what they, what it costs to come live here. In light of that, people still want to see some change. They want to see more amenities and more to do here in town, as I've mentioned, more shopping opportunities at downtown, more employment opportunities, more balanced growth in tune with providing infrastructure to support that growth, and then, and this idea of adequate and trustworthy government services and fiscal stability have come up a number of times as well, which isn't, I guess, a huge surprise. So, in light of that, we've drafted with the task force and staff a, a vision statement, and this vision statement here, I can read it to you if you'd like, I know you guys are all reading it right now, but at least the background of this is that we tried to identify those common themes, those things that seem to make sense, statements, ideas, that would lend themselves to something of a vision statement, something that you could say as, if a developer came in and asked you, what do you want to do, or city council members were at ICSC and talking with developers, or city managers doing economic development with Kyle, whatever it might be. Something that's only a few lines long, and you could give somebody a snapshot of what you're trying to achieve here over the next couple of decades with this general plan. So, we crafted several versions of this, and then we worked with staff and the city council subcommittee, and then the general plan task force to refine this, tease out those ideas that seemed to resonate, adjust, polish, et cetera, those things that were maybe a little uncomfortable. And, and this is where we've ended up. So, I guess I don't need to read for anybody. Well, I'm going to, going to anyway, it feels, just feels right. "Beaumont, where we value our small-town feel, our community heritage, and our natural setting. We're committed to encouraging economically sustainable, balanced growth, respects our long history while meeting infrastructure needs and protecting our environment. Beaumont's community pride and rural mountain setting sets our city apart as a vibrant and healthy community with local access to retail jobs, service jobs, and recreation." So, if it pleases the commission, I'll take a quick pause here and just ask, does this resonate with you? Does this seem like something that makes sense, and does it seem like, while I understand this is two or three sentences of your, you know, a snapshot of your future, I'd like to at least pause here and just say, does, does it resonate with you? Are you neutral, or does it, does, is there, are there any, you know, warning lights going on in, in your consciousness of, uh-oh, timeout, something's amiss, or it doesn't feel right?
I'll start it off. I, I, that's my vision of the city.
Cool, one point.
I'm just hoping that we can get our acts together and start doing what's necessary to bring that vision into reality.
We will do our best to write you a plan to do so.
And I would second the chairman's concerns. I mean, we're all citizens here. We're not public workers, and, yeah, this is what we vision our city to look like, but I don't think we've seen that in action. We've had this vision, but the action is, is different. Now, obviously, the whole point of the general plan is to bring those together, so I would agree with the chairman 100%.
Great.
I like it.
All right, that's.
So, I, I agree. I mean, we're not voting, but, you know, if there's, if there's a big problem, now's the time to speak.
From, from the, from the perspective of somebody who has been on the, the task force, and at the last meeting, we did kind of review this, we broke into small groups and kind of digested it. You know, the, the, the initial draft that came forward was pretty clear. We had some refinements to it, and, you know, I think this kind of accompanies or accomplishes being able to pull that together with the task force that talked about. You know, from within the task force, there's a lot of interest and, of trying to make this document so that we have a vision, so that we have some statements. And I think as we move into the next couple of points on your slides here, there's going to be some metrics, you know, as we start looking at what goals and priorities are, that we can actually sit as commission and say, is this development, is this plan following along with our vision, our goals, and our priorities? And, you know, I, I, like I said, I think for, as a, I'm jumping ahead a little bit, sorry.
That's okay, I'm happy to turn it over quicker.
But I, but I think that this vision kind of encompasses what we had talked about at the last meeting very well.
Great. Well, I, 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 that's exciting. I, I'm, oh, man. Now, I, I am getting excited and jumping ahead too. I, I'm happy to hear that we've come up with something collectively that, that maybe reflects what we're hearing from the community, and it's resonating with planning commission. I think that's a, a great start. We, we can do a lot with his vision. And as Commissioner Smith mentioned, there, there are supporting pieces to this. So, as we were working with the community at these various steps and stages, it struck us that there were a number of ideas that kept floating to the surface that, that seemed to be those, be, be things that maybe I would best describe as community values. This isn't something that, that we always draft as an accompaniment to a vision statement, but it just, it just seemed to make sense here, as these ideas kept coming forward through all these different channels. So, these ideas of guiding values, you know, maybe this would be something like an overarching, or a set of overarching principles, or, you know, maybe it's the, the Bill of Rights, and it has kind of an amendment or overarching framework to the constitution, if you will, this idea, but at least it, it's an idea of, of providing some guidance to help future policymakers understand gray areas. So perhaps the general plan doesn't anticipate some change that happens in the future, a new development concept, new housing type, new transportation ideas or opportunities, that perhaps these guiding values can provide some context and color to the vision and help in decision-making when, when we don't have that kind of specificity in the general plan. And, and we, it occurs to us that, that one, as we've been hearing from the community as well, that there are these concerns of improving government transparency and kind of a better connection between the community and city hall, if you will, that this, this kind of statement of values might be a way of also helping to connect people with city hall, you know, kind of that common statement of who we are and, and what makes us the people of Beaumont. So, and it, it seemed to resonate with the city council and the, and the general plan task force as well, but it's, it's, it's something that's absolutely optional if it doesn't make sense to you guys, or it feels awkward. The draft values that, and these are not in any particular order, but what we've heard, what we think the people of Beaumont value is that we value transparent, honest government. We value responsible, measured growth. We value living within our financial resource means. We value close ties with our neighbors. We value our small-town rural atmosphere. We value the quality of life provided by, by efficient infrastructure. We value health and safety. We value the beautiful, beautiful environment of the Pass area. You know, and actually, as, as we're dealing with land use and transportation alternatives or different policy alternatives, this might also be a framework that we can turn back to and say, okay, you know, I'm not exactly sure, should we go this direction or adjust course a little bit? Well, we might be able to return to these guiding values because they provide a little bit more context and direction for the vision. So, with that in mind, again, I'll, I'll, I'll stop and ask you guys, does this resonate with you? Does it not, does it feel awkward, incomplete, not quite right, or okay to move on?
Okay, move on.
All right.
I, I think we should add something. I think we value working with our neighbors to define as the cities, the, the local cities, and that would be Cherry Valley and Banning. And the reason why I throw that up in there is because one day you're going to be driving up Highland Springs, and you're going to look to the right, and you're going to see 4,000 homes, and that's going to be. homes, and that's going to make a massive difference to the people that live on the left of Highland Springs. So sometimes I feel like we're stovepipe. I mean, we, we will see stuff where we'll come up here and it's a building development on the right side of Highland Springs but below the 10 freeway, but we're really not working, I don't think we do too much, with Banning, who has the Albertsons on the other side of the freeway, or they might be building something that affects us. And at the end of the day, we're together and it, it affects you and me driving to work. There's 4,000 homes.
It's reassuring for me to, as, as your consultant to hear that, uh, when we were working with both the city council subcommittee and the general plan task force, we heard, that, that came through loud and clear, uh, as well as this idea that people really value the close relationships what they have, they have within their neighborhoods. And, and so, we, because of the nature of a PowerPoint presentation and needing to be done by, what is it, 7:30 I'm up to now? Uh, we're, we're not able to provide some of the context that we were given, direction that should be appropriate. Uh, and, and the, the bottom line direction that we received from the council, subcommittee and the general plan task force was, people who live in Beaumont are neighborly. We, we value our neighbors on a variety of different scales, and that is important to us, and that, and the general plan and the direction that we've ended up putting in the general plan should reflect that. Uh, as such, the idea that, that came out of that meeting would be that, um, if we move forward with these values, or something very similar to these values, uh, that each of these would be in the vision chapter of the general plan, and each of them would be accompanied by a, a paragraph or two, giving that context and explaining, you know, the depth of these ideas, the depth of these values and the nuances and how they might apply, and how you might find them throughout the general plan. So, um, I don't know if that explanation or context speaks to what you're feeling or identifying.
I just want to make sure that we know it's important in the general plan that we are considering other cities as neighbors, because it, it's a holistic approach for the citizen. You know, I don't care what city I live in, I'm still using the same road. Does that make sense?
It totally makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, we're all...
None of us are on an island.
...by the 10 freeway, so we, we need to be, including Calamasa, no one mentioned Calamasa.
And, and the school district, and the hospital district, and the water districts, yeah, you have a lot of neighbors.
You just don't want to be stovepipe. But anyways, press on, it was just a thought.
Now, and, and those thoughts, there were, there were two points, I think, on this list that kind of, we had the most discussion about, and it was neighbors, and were we referring to our immediate neighbors, are we referring to our, you know, our geographic neighbors? And even within that, other agencies, so, you know, the water district and our water districts. So, you know, I, I think in the end, we just said, you know, it needs to value, you know, neighborhood-wise, it needs to value citywide, and so neighbors kind of encompasses that, and it can be described further on. The other was, uh, efficient, and...
I saw, I keyed on that.
And, and that was kind of the other one that we were trying to figure out is, you know, how does that really kind of tease out? And it's, as, as we move in, into a little bit more guiding principles in the document, that's the recommendation was, is that we can get in there and describe that a little bit better. Because efficient water and efficient communication, efficient roads, you know, it's, it's such a broad category that it needs to kind of be thought about further.
And it's open to a lot of interpretation, too. We, we had some interesting discussions about what makes an efficient road, you know? Um, and, and, you know, at least one of the ways we're viewing this is that today's a check-in, uh, but we're not, we're not going to be freezing this language in amber. You know, this is initial direction, and the next step is to go, or land use and transportation alternatives, and if through that process and additional community outreach, we get more clarification on infrastructure, for example, we might be able to flesh that out or make some slight adjustments. Um, today's a check-in. Are we, are we heading down the right path?
I think so. I think so.
So no great concerns, seems to be about right.
Is this the end? Because I had some questions.
Please. Uh, no, I have one more slide if, if, uh, on, on content.
Don't be short, I swear. I mean, just...
I think I already lost my coffee, so I don't care. Um, actually, I don't have a slide. We, we broke this, this series of priorities into three slides to make it legible. Um, and here, here's the idea that with the vision and the guiding values, we're starting to identify, identify some context on, on what the general plan should do. Um, but similarly, in working with the community, we've heard that there are some big ideas and priorities, and we feel like at this point in the process, since we're getting that level of clarity, we should lay them out. The general plan cannot do everything, and if we spread ourselves too thin, uh, we will not accomplish anything over the next couple of decades. So, the idea here is, this is what we've heard through the community outreach thus far about the big ideas and maybe where we should be focusing our efforts. Doesn't preclude other things that we might want to do, it's just, this is what we're hearing so far is, maybe this should be our top 10 list of to-do items or something to that effect. Um, and you'll see, again, common themes and there, we, we can speak to that as well, but uh, would you guys prefer that I go through the priorities altogether and then flip back and go to questions, or? I'm going to go slide by, okay. Uh, so on this slide, we've got expand and enhance employment opportunities, uh, improve fiscal performance of city, and improve infrastructure and keep pace with development. Um, again, these aren't in any particular order, and if, at some point, would feel, make sense to prioritize them, I, we're certainly open to that. The next set, uh, next slide, expand entertainment, shopping and recreational opportunities, create a diverse and extensive open space network, ensure a high level of public safety, enhance opportunities for tourism, protect the city's historic areas, create a vibrant downtown. So I, I only have one real slide after this, if you guys want to, if you want to entertain your questions or talk about these priorities, that's where I'm at in terms of...
If it's okay, I'll throw in a couple, and they're just thoughts.
They're all ears.
Are you familiar with what the possible closing of the Banning Airport? And does that factor into the general plan at all? And the reason why I say that, just a little prelude is, airports bring a lot of money. Now, I get it's Banning, but if you've got a guy or a gal that owns an airplane, obviously they're making good money. And anybody that works in the airplane industry makes great money. So, is that factored in there at all, or is that airport closed out, done deal?
Well, we, we've had our economists, we have an economist on our team looking at it, and we asked them the same question as soon as we, we saw the news article about it, and their response was kind of like, mm, maybe, it's going to affect you, maybe not. It's, it's one piece of property, it's one use, um, and you're a fairly good-sized town, and you're anticipated to grow a lot over the next 25 years. So, i- in, in their opinion, it wasn't a make or break type of thing for your local economy. Um, and then they started asking questions like, well, you know, what is it going to redevelop into, and what does that mean for the market? Um, and again, they kind of shrugged like, well...
Well, the thought process is, airports, once they're gone, they're gone. You're never going to build another airport.
No.
Um, and they do generate a lot of revenue. So not, not today, I don't know if you've ever been to Banning Airport, it's a, it's a tumbleweed, but um, you know, five, 10, 15 years down the road, you look at some other airports like Redlands, French Valley, Hemet, uh, where they have the firebombers there, even San Bernardino, they bring in a lot of money. And especially with Cabazon so close, you know, you get a flight school in there, that benefits Ban, Beaumont and Banning. So that was just one thought. Was there any thoughts about a train station with MetroLink here? I mean, is that...
Yeah, that's come up several times in, in various forums. Um, a recommendation right now, we, we've been looking at this over the years, uh, we're, we're based in Riverside, and we do a lot of work on the 10 corridor, so we're, we're watching this as well, just because we're locals. Um, and right now, as we understand it, RCTC is looking at, are kind of planning on a, a stop in the Cabazon area as well as Palm Springs and/or Indio. Uh, and our recommendation, at this point at least, is yes, that's a great idea, and if the community likes that, even better. Um, having more infrastructure and having more access to your community is a good thing. Um, so, at the very least, while we may not be able to influence RCTC and their decisions, we can plan for this in the general plan so that if it ever becomes possible to have a stop here in Beaumont, you, you can hold up your general plan and, and say, we're ready for a train station, we have the location identified, we've been planning for it, maybe we have supportive land use and transportation policies, you can make a much stronger argument for consideration of that investment, those regional dollars, create that train station here, if it's in the plan.
Yeah, I think you're, um, you're past the breaking point where it is a time savings, taking MetroLink if you're going down to LA with due, due to traffic on all the stops, and it becomes a true winner when they do something like an express train. But, um, break, break off that. The last thing is, uh, something I would consider looking at, and I don't know if you have, try checking out Uptown Yucipa. Do that on a Friday afternoon, I think that's a good vision, kind of a thought for Beaumont.
Which part of Beaumont?
Uh, Beaumont, so take, uh, Sixth Street, right, Ramsey? Take, uh, down here from Beaumont Avenue West, I think that, that area where the many, many small stores, what you look for is something, secondhand stores, coffee shops, uh, little, little small businesses that people can walk through, and, and you kind of did a good job, because they have a couple streets that, that cross there, and so they decorated with the lights across, they've also put roundabouts in to kind of slow down traffic a little bit, but stop you from stopping, and they play music all the time. And so every Friday night, and from five to eight, they block the street off, they put some vendors in there, you get some tri-tip, tamales, whatever you want, but it's a good walking environment. It, it sucks right now, it's 105 degrees, but in the fall, you know, that's a great thing. And what they do, then they, they synchronize it with car shows, too.
That's cool.
So it, it's just something to consider, where you could see something real-time, no different than Redlands and Market Night.
No, I, I think that's really helpful, be- because again, as we've mentioned, well, there is in the last bullet point, create a vibrant downtown. Uh, and we just started getting kind of hints of what that means to people. Uh, some folks have mentioned Old Town Temecula, Redlands, um, somebody mentioned Santa Barbara, I think, if I remember right, but anyway, you know, we're trying to understand, okay, what, what might a downtown Beaumont look like if, at the end of this 20-year plan? So that's really helpful.
I think if you try to, I mean, they, they did a good job, they put a, they, it's kind of a, a home brewery called Brew Caipa, right up there, so it's, it's a place where people can hang out and, and socialize, and then they can just kind of walk around and, and just go, go to different little stores that are open, coffee shops.
That's cool. So we need Brumont.
Brumont. And a piology.
I completely agree. That would be my vision of downtown, too.
Piology?
No, I'm kidding. Brumont, but no, that, whatever you want to call it, Uptown Yucipa.
You can call it instead of, what was the webpage?
Elevate Beaumont.
Elevate Beaumont, we should just call it Brumont.
That'll be for the downtown.
I think you need to copyright that trademark or whatever.
Hey, it's yours, I'm here, uh, everything I create is yours, so that's...
No, but I mean, seriously, we just strung string light from one side of Sixth to the other. It would completely change the aesthetics of it, and it would feel way cooler.
Yeah.
Um, but I mean, it was pretty simple, what Yucipa did, it's not that dramatic.
No, and you already have the bones. And you guys, you guys are a historic railroad town.
And there's lots of small stores that would support this, you know, I mean, a lot of secondhand stores, and those are the kind of shops you just kind of walk by, antique stores, you know, those aren't the one, you're not looking for a dollar store down there, you're looking for a secondhand store, antique store, something that's open late, even a pet store, you know, go in there and you just kind of get, oh, I need to get this for my hamster, whatever.
I'm with you. And you, you guys are actually very, very lucky that you still have that town pattern. There, there are a lot of cities that would just kill for that, so I, I, you already have the bones. You're a great, a great starting point.
So I think west of Beaumont Avenue and Sixth would be that, that target area as a thought. But anyways, that, that was it, sorry.
Yep, that's, that's really helpful. It's really helpful. Do the rest of the general plan priorities resonate with you guys, or do you seem like we're on track?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, they're ambiguous, I mean, they're pleasant words, to be honest. You know, they're pleasant ambiguous words that anybody would like. I mean, they're not efficient, fast, nice, transparency. So yeah, as long enough that the action corresponds with those words, I think you guys are right on target.
But that's, that's our responsibility up here as well, as planning commissioners and for the city council, is to take this document that we have and actually use it as guiding principles, you know, it's, um, here on planning, we're going to have a lot of say on this. If someone shows up and says, we want to put a five-story, you know, mixed-use apartment building on the corner of Beaumont and Sixth, does it fit with these things? And, you know, it, it's our responsibility to make sure that the plans that come forward do, and it gives clearer direction to staff to make sure that, as someone proposes a project, if they want that, that they can look at and say, this doesn't really match with our vision and our priority and so forth. You know, so ultimately, it's, it's upon us and council to follow it and direct staff to follow it, you know, to, to that same thing.
He brought up a good point, I didn't think about this, it's kind of a tangent. Is there something in there with the, with regards to dark skies? Does the city already have something to that regard?
Yeah.
Okay.
Dark skies in the municipal code.
Okay.
Yes.
We could put supporting policies in the general plan if you, if you guys feel like that's...
I think it's important to have dark skies. It is, it just, I mean, obviously, I, I moved up to Yucipa, and it's, it's nice that you can actually see, there's these things in the sky that shine.
That are not satellites.
Yeah, they're not satellites, actually, besides the big one.
We'll see a mix on that, just so you're aware, we've heard mixed things. Some people love the dark skies, some people say it reduces the safety fill, so we may have to make sure that we're very clear in our priorities on...
Gotcha.
...what we want to do.
Understood.
As we move forward.
I like the dark skies.
What do people complain about it?
They feel that it's not safe.
Oh, they can't see?
By not having enough streetlights, by not having extra streetlights all the way down, by not lighting up the sidewalks and the community and parking lots, which would cause less of a dark sky, because you have more glow, that it's, that it's less safe. So we hear both ways. We do have a dark sky ordinance that limits streetlights, uh, to cul-de-sacs, and, you know, to knuckles, cul-de-sacs, intersections. The only time you can do a mid-block light is if it's over 1,000 feet on the light, but people feel that that's not nearly enough light for their neighborhood. So we, we hear it both ways. We have people who love the dark sky, but I just want to make it clear, as we go through in these discussions and surveys and workshops, that we're going, we, we may have a big clash on, on people who like the dark sky and not, because we have vocal advocates in both directions. A lot of things, you, you have advocates one way or another, but that one we hear from Pete, that's one of the few items that we hear complete opposite views all the time.
Why don't we encourage the ballad lights where they're low, closer to these, to the streets, so you get the same lighting without affecting the dark skies?
That's all, that's the things we can look at. We definitely encourage the lower lighting in parks and trains, but it might not be necessarily as efficient on all the streets.
But it would tie with your vision, I mean, if the vision's rural, the rural vision is a, and you want to see the mountains, and you want to be able to set a telescope...
I agree, I just wanted to make sure that our consultant was aware that we'll, we'll hit both sides of that issue, uh, through this process.
All right, well, next steps, um, we're right here in the visioning process, summer and the fall. Um, the next steps for us immediately are going to be to start working on land use and transportation concepts. The idea is to take this vision and these priorities and these values and start coming up with ideas on how those could translate to the actual place, uh, and then we'll take those to the community for input, we'll take those to the general plan task force, city council subcommittee, um, don't remember, I'm sorry, off the top of my head, if we're coming back to you guys with those al- those alternatives, and when we get an alternative set as a preferred alternative, then we can start developing the policy framework, which is, you know, and, and flush that out into the draft general plan. And our goal here is to be done, um, fall, winter 2018. So, fun part is coming up right now.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, and then there'll be all the sequel stuff, which we have to...
The not as fun part.
The less fun part, right. Traffic studies, air quality studies.
Well, I could get behind a traffic study, though.
Ah, all right, I'll make sure that's teed up for you.